Good evening, everyone. Um, this is the Board of Education's meeting. Today is June the first, June the first. Year is halfway through, uh, two thousand and twenty-one. The time is now five thirty-four. On behalf of the Board of Education, the Superintendent, um, and the independent monitor, uh, and all those folks that work for the Rochester City School District, good evening. We hope that you all have had an opportunity to enjoy the weather to some extent, get some work done, spend time with family, and we hope that, uh, we're able to, uh, finish our business in an efficient and effective way such that you can enjoy the balance of the evening with your family and friends. Um, again, today is June the first, two thousand and twenty-one, and I am now on behalf of the Board of Education, calling this meeting to order. All right, uh, as you all know, um, one of the first things that we do is we, uh, listen to folks out in the community who have something to say. Uh, COVID has, uh, this forum now in the digital world. Before, people would actually come down to one thirty-one West Broad Street and speak their mind. Well, uh, since we've been in COVID lockdown, we've been doing it in the digital realm. And my understanding is, Madam Clerk, we have one speaker, is that right?
That is correct, um, Mr. President. We have, uh, Mr. Peter Burke, who is a community member, and he'll be addressing the board regarding bully proof. I'm gonna be letting him into the room right now. Mr. Burke, are you there?
Yes, I am. Hello.
Wonderful. Welcome, Mr. Burke, in. Whenever you're not three minutes.
Mr. Burke, if I could, before you begin, uh, you know, and I, I've not had to give this caution before, but since you, uh, did let folks know what you're gonna be speaking about, it's important for folks to realize that this is a forum for people to discuss their concerns, their ideas, their suggestions, but it is, uh, not that you were going to do that, but it is not a forum to promote particular products or services. So I just wanted to make sure that you and others understood that cautionary note, uh, because if we were to allow people to promote certain, uh, programs and services, as valuable as they might be, um, this would become more of a commercial than what it's supposed to be, which is a forum for people to express ideas and concerns about the district. So having said that, um, please go ahead and, and utilize your three minutes as democracy would have you do that.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Van White. Hello, Superintendent, Board of Education, students, staff, and community, families. My name is Peter Burke, and I have to say that. My name is Peter Burke, and I'm a former teacher for the Rochester City School District. Now, I think the big thing I'm gonna bring up is bully proof in our kids. And basically, um, if we improve our schools' bully proof in our kids, starting at home, uh, in the communities and at school, our kids will feel safe, attend school, right? If they feel safe, they'll attend school. And when you do that, it will literally bring more revenue to the district because more students will feel comfortable coming to school. I experienced bullying as a kid. See, you caught me off guard, Mr. White. You knew I was gonna bring up a little bit of a commercial, so I apologize for that. So I'm kinda switching gears right now. But I really believe that if we take good care of our kids at school, they're gonna feel safe and come to school. Okay, so that's the big thing. I, I taught in a city for twenty, twenty-plus years, and what I saw in Home Hospital, uh, Clinton Avenue Learner Center, all the alternative education and general education, we've had great things in our district throughout our history, and now it's a matter of cycling back and getting back to the basics. I see that if we get back to the basics, our kids will feel safe, wanna come to school, perform well on tests, and graduate from high school. So I think that's the key. I think the key is making sure our kids feel safe. We get the buy-in from the kids, the parents, and the community, and this district will be the best in this country, not just in Rochester, but throughout the country. Rochester City used to compete with all schools, not even just in the city, but Monroe County. And that's why we got such big contracts as teachers years ago, is because we outperformed the country and what we did as a city to teach our kids. So I'm just here to support the board, the parents, and the community in our schools, 'cause I know our schools will literally be the thing to help heal this country and this planet. So that's it. It's about my three minutes. Ms. Wade, thank you for that, and you have a blessed night, and we'll talk to you soon. Take care.
Thank you very much, Mr. Burke, and we appreciate you addressing the board tonight.
Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, uh, in case anybody wanted to, uh, do what Mr. Burke just eloquently did, which is to, uh, offer comments or concerns about, uh, the district or ideas about the district, could you tell them how they would do that?
Sure. So members of the public who are interested in addressing the board during a board meeting may do so by signing up to speak. You may do so by emailing boardofeducation@rcsdk12.org, or by calling the board office number and providing your name and a few details. Once you do that, um, and that has to be done before noon on the day of the meeting, you'll be added to our speakers list, and we will contact you with, um, Zoom details so that you may join the meeting. And if you would like to submit comments, um, the board is also receiving those to the boardofeducation@rcsdk12 email address, and those will be circulated before the meeting and also posted to the website.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, next item on our agenda is the presentation of the coronavirus aid package. Uh, I understand, Madam Superintendent, that Deputy Superintendent Morris will present, uh, this, uh, will make this presentation, is that right?
She will, President White, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Superintendent?
Good evening. How is everyone? I hope you're all enjoying this beautiful weather, and I'm going to talk about the American Rescue Plan, um, funding. Sharing my screen. All right. So thank you so much for, um, joining me this evening and allowing me the opportunity to present the, um, information that we have about the American Rescue Plan. We have my colleague as well, uh, Carrie Pecor, who is the Director of Grants, who is here as well, in case there's some questions that, um, either one of us can provide answers to tonight. And we wanted to provide an overview of the American Rescue Plan of two thousand and twenty-one as we currently know it, um, and give you some, um, general, um, overview about what we are doing moving forward, and also share with you some opportunities for additional stakeholder engagement that we have planned. So, um, my name is, um, Janelle Morris, as you know, and I have my colleague here, um, to help us with any types of, um, uh, questions that you may have about this. But we really wanted to provide an overview of what the American Plan, Rescue Plan dollars were, um, and also about, uh, some of the areas that we are providing opportunity for input and recommendations about the use of the funds. We're also gonna provide some background information on the various, uh, Corona, uh, coronavirus aid funding streams that we have had currently directed to the district, and dig a little deeper into the rescue plan process. So we have, um, three main coronavirus stimulus fund, uh, buckets, if you will, that are gonna provide an overview of, uh, the different types of funding, and we have an approximate three hundred million dollars that will be directed to the district over the next three years. So this is as a result of the federal government providing emergency aid to various government and governmental agencies, including, uh, school districts and state education agencies. And this funding for us specifically is earmarked to help our district address the academic, social, emotional, and health needs of our students that have arisen as a result of the pandemic. The funding is being issued in three different streams, as shown on my screen. We have the CARES Act funding. We have the CERSA, or Coronavirus Response Review and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act. And then we also have the ARPA, which is the American Rescue Plan Act. The Coronavirus Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act was passed in the fall of two thousand and twenty, and the American Rescue Plan Act was passed in March, two thousand and twenty-one. And so, uh, the opportunities that are available with these funding are intended to have a powerful and lasting impact on the education of our students. So the ARP funding, or the American Rescue Plan funding, is the largest stream of funding that our district will receive. The total of this funding is going to be about a hundred and ninety-seven million dollars. As with all federal funds, in order to receive this funding, the district will need to adhere to some guidelines and have to use these funds in very specific ways. First and foremost, the district is being advised to prioritize spending on non-recurring expenses. Uh, these funds can be used to, uh, support district response efforts to the coronavirus, as listed on this slide. Um, we can also have allowable uses of the funds that will include provision of supplemental learning experiences for our students, which could be focused on both academic and social emotional learning, such as some of the ones that we've listed on this slide. So those include, uh, coordinating and implementing remote learning, for example, um, purchase of hardware, software, and internet access for students, or providing mental health supports, or, um, coordinating and implementing summer learning and supplemental after-school programs. So additionally, twenty percent of the funds that we will receive, or approximately forty million dollars, must be used to bolter, bolster students' academic programming in a way that will make up for instruction that they may have lost during the pandemic. Finally, funds can be used for any activity that would fall within some of the exist, existing educational laws, including those listed above. So some of the areas that are allowable for use of the funding include assessing student progress and need, uh, making sure that we implement and support those with these funds, activities to meet our needs of our students, um, providing information to families about how they can also support students, and also allowing an opportunity to use the funds to track and improve student attendance and engagement. So the district's ARP planning centers on students' academic and social emotional needs in alignment with our strategic priorities and the recommendations put forth by our independent monitors' academic and financial plans. Academics are centered within the ARP plan and will include the following core areas. We plan to have a focus on culturally responsive and informed practices, and this is in alignment with our position that we are, and the RCSD is an actively anti-racist organization focused on providing students with affirming learning experiences where diversity, equity, and inclusion are at the center of decision-making. Additional core areas we will focus on include provision of high-quality learning experiences, where we are ensuring that every student has access to and engages with grade-level content and high-quality instructional materials daily. Uh, we are also focusing in the core area, the expansion of diverse programming, where each school will offer dynamic, innovative, and engaging programs and pathways where all students can find their voice and cultivate their respective passion. Um, another core area includes provision of expanded learning. The RCSD will ensure we will provide robust, expanded learning opportunities for all students that challenge them to engage in real-world application of their learning. And another core area we will focus on in the, um, allocation of these funds will include the recruitment, development, and retention of high-quality staff. So the RCSD will ensure that staff members have the desire, belief, knowledge, and skills to provide high-quality learning experiences to students every day. So we also wanted to come up with some guiding questions that would be used, um, to help us focus the, um, community and stakeholder engagement, um, for this work. And so some of the guiding questions have helped us in terms of trying to collect some of this, um, the ideas about how to use the funds. So these questions that we have on the screen are built from guidance that was issued by the Council of Great City Schools, and in keeping these questions at the forefront of our planning, it allows us to commit to effective and optimal use of funds. So we are sharing these questions with you all, as well as the stakeholders that we have engaged along the way, so that, um, we can, um, use that to help guide our input that we collect for the use of the funds. So the three guiding questions are: how does this investment address student needs with regards to the strategic and independent monitors' plans, and the RCSD's instructional priorities? What do we already know about the effectiveness of this investment, and how will this be measured in the RCSD? And what resources are necessary to sustain this investment? What is the plan for this investment after the funding period ends? So, um, we have varying ways that we have tried to, um, ensure that we are, um, collecting input on the district's use of the ARP funds. Um, here are some of the additional forums that we are, um, engaging with our stakeholders, um, and we are, um, uh, finding different ways that we can, uh, have to engage with our stakeholders. We have a website that includes www.rcdk12, um, in its slash ARP, and that is a place where we are putting information that we are collecting as we receive it. Uh, we are going to try and have a periodic update that will be made publicly available, um, as we receive information to allow the community and stakeholders to understand how these funds can be used. We also have planned and have actually executed one of the parent and community forums. That was on May twenty-sixth, but we also have another one that will be on Thursday, June tenth, from five-thirty PM to seven-thirty PM. So if you weren't able to participate in the May twenty-sixth, uh, forum, we would love to have you, um, sign up to, um, speak at our upcoming forum on June tenth. We also will have a student forum tomorrow, and that will be at one PM for our students to give us their input about the use of these funds. And then we also have, um, employee forums that will be scheduled on June ninth, and we have one at two-thirty PM, and we have another one at three forty-five PM. And we finally have already had a principal forum, and we did that at the network principal meetings that were held on May twenty-eighth. And so, uh, we just wanted to bring this information to the Board of Education and also use this as an opportunity to provide an opportunity to get, um, input about the use of the funds. And, um, Ms. Pecor and I are here to answer any questions we may be able to, based on, uh, this presentation. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Deputy Superintendent Morris. Uh, I'm looking at the participant list. I apologize, I'm on my cellphone. My laptop is not working, isn't connecting with the district, so, uh, uh, work with me here, folks. But I'm looking through the list, and I don't see any hands being raised. Uh, double-checking. No, uh, Deputy Morris, I don't see any questions for you. Uh, Superintendent, did you wanna add anything further?
I just want some questions asked. Can't get off.
Commissioner, Commissioner Adams is gonna oblige you. Commissioner Adams?
Yeah, um, I, I understand she said that we have to prioritize, uh, certain things, um, but that, that doesn't mean exclusively, um, prioritizing, um, and, and when we talk about one time, um, things that don't reoccur, we need to address the, the seriousness of the trauma that the, the students are coming back with, um, and they'll never have to address that again on that level, the first, the level of the first year back. Same thing applies with these SSOs. Um, we have to be honest and would know that the violence that's in our community is coming into the building. And so I really want us to figure out how to make sure they get some training, they get some more funding, they need to get a raise so that they can only have that job and focus on their job. Our kids' safety is gonna be really, really important come September, man. If we think for one second that the, the school district ain't gonna be a reflection of the community, um, we tripping. So I just want us to try to figure out, be creative enough to do what we need to do, um, when it comes to these SSOs and the people that are gonna address the mental health of, of, of our students, man. Um, and, and I just had to put that on record. I'm done.
Thank you.
Deputy, do you wanna respond to that, or, or Superintendent?
I think, uh, certainly, um, Commissioner Adams, we are, uh, addressing and looking at what additional supports that we need to put into place when we have most, if not all of our students coming back to, to school, um, in September. Um, as I mentioned last week, we're, we are administering a survey for our secondary students to get their pulse on where things are, and we have another project that I, I'll be able to talk to you about shortly that will further get some information, um, to help us decide where we need to put those particular supports. I also have meetings with folks in the county and with, uh, CCSI and Dr. Meeker, so that is something that Deputy Superintendent Martinez-Davis is actively working on. I'm actively working on that because we recognize that we don't even know what, what the extent of the trauma that's gonna walk across the door come, um, come September. So we're absolutely on that. And as far as SSOs, I know, um, Mike and I met this morning as far as just taking a look at, uh, bringing individuals, uh, back to the school, and just as far as raises, that's negotiation, so that's something that we can't speak on further.
Looking to see if there are any other questions. Uh, it's Commissioner Clark?
Yes, uh, it's more of a process question. It's great that we're having these community forums and bringing the community in and getting their comments and suggestions on how we can more effectively use these funds in the upcoming year. But my question is, you know, once the input is, uh, is given, how is that evaluated and how is that brought back before the board so that we can give that serious consideration?
So, i- i- are you talking about after the implementation of whatever we allocate the funds for, how the evaluative process occurs?
Actually, I'm speaking before. Once you complete the community forums and you receive all the suggestions that fall within the parameters that were given on the use of the funds, how are those suggestions gonna be funneled up to the board for consideration? And, and what role would that play in, you know, changing, uh, impacting how we use these funds?
I think our immediate plan is to collect the, um, input that we receive from the, uh, the community and from the stakeholders, and as we have already begun to do, um, bring that to the superintendent for prioritization. Um, we have, as I mentioned before, we have core areas that we are assigning, the, um, the recommendations as we receive them, so that it will make it a little bit easier for us to work with the superintendent to determine just what do we want to prioritize with the use of the funds. Um, so we are trying to come up with some core areas and try and determine what percentages of the funds have to be used for specific areas, and then what percentage of the funds can be used for requests that we will receive from the community or from stakeholders. Once we get that, we have been presenting that information to the board, I mean, not to the board, to the superintendent, so that we can start to prioritize, and I think that will be our immediate, um, process to, um, get the superintendent's input based on the alignment of the priorities that she has given us. Um, and then I believe we can determine the process for it to be brought to the board after that point.
Thank you.
All right, um, we're running, uh, on time. Uh, I don't wanna keep this moving, but I do have a question for, to myself, and you can do sort of a lightning round, uh, round response. First question is, uh, when we had, uh, when we returned to schools, there was the allegation or concern that our, our staff, that there wasn't, and I'm not saying that these, these statements were true, but there were considerable complaints that we weren't ready, uh, insofar as the teachers and staff members weren't properly trained and ready for this new approach to teaching, given the constraints of COVID. I, I do remember frequently members of various collective bargaining units saying, "We're not even ready for this. How could you put us back in schools?" Uh, I, I just wanna make sure, this is more of a question than a statement, I, I wanna make sure that there is no question that we are ready for what we're asking our staff members to do. Um, that cannot be an issue, uh, or a defense that, uh, our staff make when we ask them to step up to do something different. They are entitled. Our students need them to be ready. So I just add that as a point of reference. Please make sure, since we have the resources to provide for their readiness, that the plan for training, uh, is, is solid, and it is available long in advance of our, our staff members returning to school, whatever you deem to be necessary and appropriate in terms of training. My only point is, please make sure that, uh, the training plan is solid, is available, so that when we are asking them to do things differently, whether it's social emotional support or safety, that they are fully trained and ready to hit the ground running when our schools open. The second question, the second point is really a question, and it doesn't have to be answered right now. I have heard over the course of many months that because of COVID, we will have significant challenges in hiring and retaining people and, and actually just hiring people to fill existing employment gaps. I understand that is the case, no fault of this district with bus drivers. That seems to be the case with SSOs and other staff members. I think that our, our response, the district where we reduced our, our, our staff, some in response to the budget challenges, some in response to COVID, have left many people feeling like the district is not the right place where they want to work or they have found other jobs where they know that there is job security. Again, no fault of anybody's, but the end result is, my understanding is that we, we may not be able to hire all the people that we need. Commissioner Adams made the eloquent point about what is happening in our community is going to find its way into our schools. Are our sentries, our SSOs prepared now that we've removed police officers from the schools? Are our SSOs prepared for that additional challenge? And by preparation, once I, again, I mean training, but also as a preliminary matter, are we even, and you don't have to answer this right now, Leslie, but the word is, it is going to be very difficult and challenging to get SSOs, to get up, get up to our full complement of SSOs in our buildings. Not only could we not afford to not have those that are there not trained, but my God, and I mean that sincerely, the worst thing that could happen is we are not able to hire the requisite number of SSOs to provide for the safety of our children. And I understand that there is a capacity issue that we, that, that there just isn't the applicant pool for those jobs out there, for us to fill them within the district. So that could be put on the question log, and the question log is simply this. Will we have so many vacancies that we're not able to fill critical key positions? Like, for example, SSOs and bus drivers? Has our employment history, has the challenges of COVID gotten us to a place where we may not even be able to recruit a sufficient number of qualified, capable, and committed employees to perform the vital work that needs to be done? I, I, again, you can imagine a scenario where we find ourselves in August and September and we don't have to get the training. We don't even have the right number of people. So if you could, Superintendent, please address that issue through the question log is fine. Because that is going to be a concern of, of mind, and I'm certain of the community. Yes, ma'am.
President White, I can just initially answer that. I think we're seeing that across the, across our entire county where people are struggling, you know, with the, for example, the curfew being lifted for restaurants. And just yesterday morning, I was watching Spectrum and they were saying, we're, we're trying to do everything that we can to get folks back. Some people on, in the, on the news report, they were saying, you know, some people just aren't ready to come back. Some individuals have found employment other places and some are continuing to collect unemployment. There's a myriad of reasons. So Christopher, Dr. Miller, is working hard with his team in, in human capital to think of creative ways for recruitment and to cast the net far and wide so we can have those individuals, so we can have the numbers that we need. But we are working on that, that I share the concern as well, that we need to try and figure out how to address that. And we actually met this morning and spoke about that and to, and discuss some possible next steps. So we are aware that the employment is difficult just in general as far as, overall in our county, in our city. And so we know that we're going to, going to be competing with others and we're trying to figure out how to be the most creative to get folks back to the district or to get new individuals into our school district.
I, I, I'm going to get to you, Commissioner Adams, in a second, but I just want to follow up now very quickly, Superintendent. I agree with you, this is not a challenge that is unique to the city school district. The only difference is, and I'm sure you would agree with me, the consequences of not having a full complement of staff could be devastating for our district as, as compared to, let's say, a restaurant, they're not able to open. And that might be devastating for someone's appetite. But if we don't have the full complement of SSOs or cafeteria staff people to feed our children, SSOs to protect our children, bus drivers to drive our children safely to schools, that could have dire consequences. That doesn't mean that your challenges in recruiting those people is any easier than those in the restaurant industry. My only point is, and I'm sure you appreciate this, if we fail in that regard, the consequences could be devastating. And I, and I, I'm not sitting here saying I have an answer for it, but it, as Commissioner Adams said five minutes ago, not having people trained, hell, not having people in the building to protect our children could be devastating. And so what I would ask, perhaps if Vice President Elliott would be willing to consider getting an update from your administration as part of the Human Resource Committee so that we, or you could give it at any board meeting where we can make sure we understand where you're at before our doors open in August. Commissioner Adams?
Yes, I just want to make a couple of quick statements here. I just want to be clear that I, I don't think the SSOs need the training because the, the SROs are out the building. They've been doing their work. They need more training because of a pandemic came upon this community that we're not prepared for. Nobody's prepared for that. That's why I say that they need, not because of the SROs, let me be clear about that. And my other statement is, I just want to say to the community, please, please come to these forums. Come to these forums and do some input. We may stay from 5:30 to 7:30, but if we have to, we'll go longer. Come to the forums, please, and, and, and put your input in, man. Thank you. That's it.
Commissioner Adams, I, I just, I don't disagree with anything you said, except to the extent that, to the extent we have fewer people charged with protecting our children, whether they're SSOs or SROs, surely I agree with you. Our SSOs are up to the job, have been up to the job, but this is a different job. Our community has become more violent for whatever reason. And we don't have, we may not have enough SSOs. We certainly don't have SROs, and we don't have enough SSOs. So my point is, not that they were not, are not capable. They do need training, like all of our staff, there are new challenges. Every year, there are new challenges. I brought up the SROs just to state the fact that by the numbers, we don't have people in the building to protect our children the way we used to because we don't have SROs. And because the fact is, in speaking to the people who, who manage the SSOs and speaking to SSOs directly, there aren't enough SSOs. That's, that's a problem. But thank you, Commissioner Superintendent, for, for responding in that manner. I agree with everything you say. I agree with what Commissioner Adams has said. But if you could give us an update, that would be very, very helpful. All right, next item on the agenda is consideration of resolutions. We have two resolutions, as I understand it, Madam Clerk, 847 and 848. Is that right?
That is correct.
I have asked Commissioner Malloy, is she sort of our designated to thank folks who make future this district or, or donations to this district to, to introduce Resolution 847. First of all, is there a motion to discuss Resolution 847?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Malloy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. Commissioner Malloy, would you introduce this resolution for us?
Yes, so Resolution 847 pertains to a gift that we are receiving from the Church of Love Faith Center. And this is via a grant from the William and Sheila Konar Foundation. They have donated $20,000 to help us establish food pantries at up to eight of our designated community schools if we have the space available. This is a really generous donation from this particular church. I want to thank them for their generosity on behalf of the board. And I also just want to, you know, tell the community that we understand how important the faith community is at large. It plays such a critical role in our district for our students and their families, and we, we truly value these continued partnerships. They helped, help us all strengthen community ties, and we just want to say thank you for your continued generosity.
Thank you, Commissioner Malloy. Next item on our agenda, oh, I'm sorry, we have to vote on Resolution 847. All those in favor, are there any other questions or comments regarding Resolution 847? I am assuming there won't be, but let me just double check. There appears to be no questions or comments. So why don't we go ahead and take a vote on Resolution 847? All those in favor of Resolution 847 indicate by turning on your monitor and by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Madam Clerk, it seems that the ayes have it. Next, we have Resolution 848. Is there a motion to discuss for Resolution 848?
Motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Malloy. Is there a second?
Second.
I think I heard Commissioner Clark. All right, so are there any questions or comments regarding Resolution 848? This probably looks very familiar to you all. We discussed this in executive session as required by law initially because folks out there listening, we're not allowed to discuss the specific, particular terms and conditions of a person's employment contract in public. We have to do that in private in executive session. We did that, I think it was last week, but there still may be questions. I see Commissioner LeBron has raised her hand.
Yep, I'm not going to be voting for this resolution, but I want to be clear to the community that I was able to specifically reach out to the Bilingual Education Council and get some feedback from them. And I did ask them to put it in writing to the board, and so I did receive that. I don't know if the other board members were copied in on the email. But because of their collective feedback, I will not be voting in supporting that tonight.
I'm looking at the, a, the participant list, seeing if there are any other questions or comments.
Just have a question. Commissioner LeBron, is it for both or just, or, or one?
It's, it's for one, but the way that the resolution is written, it includes two people. So I will just be voting no on the entire resolution.
Commissioner LeBron, for your courtesy, if you'd like, we've done this before. We can amend the resolution so that it's 848A and 848B, if you'd like. If not, we can just vote on it as 848.
It's, I think there has to be a motion for that separately, so. But we can ask Steve for Parliament's advice.
Well, that, that clearly can be done. We've done it many times before. I just wanted to know if we did it, would it be worth the effort? Would you be, would it make it more easier for you to clarify your vote in terms of you maybe support one resolution and not the other? I know we can do it. We've done it many times before.
Um, yeah, but I've asked Steve for parliamentary advice because there's an open motion on the floor for a resolution.
Steve?
Yeah, I mean, technically, a motion to somehow deal with the existing resolution on the floor would, would take precedence over the current motion to discuss. But you, you could, you could easily, I mean, just say you want to separate right now and to make a quick resolution, motion to separate into A and B, and then go back to the vote on each part. That, that's, that's fine. On those small board rules, we could probably overlook it too. But if the question's being asked, the formality would say that you do it that way.
I'd prefer the formality, especially when dealing with personnel.
Yep.
So as I indicated, we can, Steve, if this is the correct word, amend the, the current resolution so that reflects 848A and 848B for the second employee.
Right. Yep, probably do it by name. 848A is, yeah.
Yep. It, it is, you know, is there a motion? I think I heard Commissioner Malloy. I'm sorry, it might be my phone. Was that you, Commissioner Malloy?
Yes, it was.
Yep. Is there a second to that motion? I think I heard Commissioner Adams. All those in favor of amending Resolution 848 so that it reads 848A with respect to, that indicates Jason Mohammed and 848B with respect to Robert Snyder? Any questions or comments regarding that proposed amendment? Looking, hold on, I'm looking at my screen again. I apologize, I'm using my cellphone. No, I don't see any questions or comments, so let's go ahead and vote on the amendment. Now, this is just the amendment. All those in favor of amending Resolution 848A so that it reads 848A for Mr. Mohammed and 848B for Mr. Snyder indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Madam Clerk, if the ayes have it, the resolution has been amended. So let's see if there's any further questions or comments regarding the amended Resolution 848A and 848B. I'm looking at my participant screen.
President White, you should probably just take it.
Yes, sir.
You should probably just redo, take a motion, take a motion on 848A, get a second, do a discussion. I do them separately.
Now, that's fine.
You have a question without, I don't know if it's A or B, the one from Monroe. I didn't receive.
I said, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I didn't receive the information that came from the council. I'd be interested in knowing what that information was.
What information? I'm sorry.
I thought. No, I thought Commissioner LeBron referenced some information from the council regarding this resolution or this, yeah, this resolution. So I, I didn't receive it. So I was wondering if that information can be shared or forwarded so I could also take a look.
I was doing a, perhaps I missed it too. Shelley, I was looking for it as well, but perhaps I missed it. Commissioner LeBron, you have the email. Do you know who was copied in on it?
Dr. Jallow, I just forwarded it to you, and I don't know who all was copied in, if there were folks who were blind CC'd in. Because I made a request for a feedback, and I made a request that board members were blind CC'd in so that there were no conversations and it constituted an illegal meeting. But I just forwarded it to you, Dr. Jallow.
Well, I tell you what, we have to go into a confidential session with our lawyer at the end of the meeting. I'm going to suggest that we take a motion to go into executive session as well for the purpose of discussing the terms and conditions of a particular employee. Perhaps by that time, someone, perhaps, Commissioner LeBron, I'm looking through my email. I don't see, it's not that it's not there, but I don't see it. Perhaps you could, in the interim, distribute it to everybody because we all have to vote, not just Dr. Jallow. So why don't we, see, we wouldn't have to formally table this. We could just, will we table it until later on in the meeting?
No, when you go into, when you put something to exec, you don't have to table it. You just say, we're going to take that into exec. You take it out of order.
But I'm saying, at this, at this particular point, we, we already have it up for discussion.
You actually don't. You, you haven't gotten either one of them before the, because since they were split, the prior motion.
Oh, that's right. You suggested, that's right. You suggested that we take them separately. All right.
One needs to go in exec, you take that one in, and if the other one can be voted on now, you can vote on it, or you can take them both, and it's up to you.
All right, so let me, let me play my best guess here. I, can I get a motion to discuss Resolution 848B that relates to Robert Snyder? I heard Commissioner Malloy, and I heard another voice at the same time. Who was that? Is that Commissioner Powell? I need a second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams. I have a second. Any questions or comments regarding Resolution 848A, B, as it relates to Robert Snyder? Let me go to my. I don't see any questions or comments, so let's go ahead and take a vote on 848B. All those in favor of Resolution 848B relating to employee Robert Snyder indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seems, Madam Clerk, the ayes have it, that is, with respect to 848B. So let's go on on our agenda, and we'll get.
President White.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, why are we going into executive session for A?
Because there is, as Dr. Jallow. Because there is, as Dr. Jallow correctly points out, apparently there is a memo that, or email that was authored by members of the bilingual council that Commissioner LeBron got. It's not, I'm not clear whether other people got it as well. Clearly, Dr. Jallow did, and I don't see it in my email box. So I think it does make sense, as Dr. Jallow suggests, that everybody have a chance to review that before we vote on 848A, which is Mr. Mohammed.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Is there any way that we can go into executive session now to discuss? And we can, and the board can take a look at it as well? I feel like we should really move in that direction. I'll move that. I'll make a motion to do that.
There has been a motion to go into executive session made by Vice President Elliott. I believe I heard Commissioner Malloy make the second to that motion. So let's get a vote. All those in favor of going into executive session for the purposes of discussing the terms and conditions of employment for a particular person indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposition? All right, Tom, we're going to go into executive session to the public. Just a little glitch here. We need to discuss a particular situation before voting on it. So we're going to go into executive session as required by law, and then we'll come back and resume our business.
As promised, the Board of Education is back from executive session and there are some votes to take, still additional vote to take. There is Resolution 848A which is a motion to hire someone as principal. Is there a motion to advance for discussion Resolution 848A?
Move.
I heard Commissioner Clark, is there a sec? I think I heard a second, was that Vice President Elliott?
Yes.
Thank you ma'am. Any questions or comments regarding Resolution 848A? I'm looking through my participant screen. I do see Commissioner LeBron has raised her hand.
Yep, I just want to state for the record that I am voting no on this resolution to support the BEC's feedback that I received. I know other board members have not. I do want to just state that I do support Jason and he has been an incredible VP at this school. So this is not personal to him, but this is personal to the district and the process that they created for this finalization. So that's one. And two, I am requesting a meeting as the commissioner with Jason as the new principal and the BEC so that we can move forward.
Thank you, Commissioner LeBron. Vice President Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just so delighted that the board has approved the recommendation by the superintendent for Jason Muhammad. The reason is, is that he spent a lot of time with Sandra in it. It was Jason and Sandra that really moved this district, this school Monroe to the place in which it is. I'm really excited about that and the work that Sandra and Jason and others have done over there. And when they came and presented to the ESA committee, I was just so impressed by the work that's been done over there and they get it. And I want to continue for the school to move up and the only way in which that can happen is, is that you have a continued trajectory of the work that's been done before. And Jason's been a part of that with Sandra's Blackman's leadership. And so it just gives me great honor that the board is, has approved the appointment of Jason. Have we done that already? Did we vote on that?
No, not yet.
So I'm hoping, let me just say that, that we're going to approve because they've done, along with Sandra Blackman, they did incredible work over there, hard work, the kind of work that I know with my tenure in this community and lastly, working at Baton Street Settlement. And so, you know, there's going to be a learning curve in whoever the new AP is, but I think that with the leadership of Jason Muhammad to continue on the trajectory that Sandra Blackman and the team did, that's why I'm interested in having Jason Muhammad to move into this position because I want to continue on that trajectory of success. And they certainly have proven that we could take a school that was, and really still in receivership, but moving from, think something like but moving from, think something like a forty something percent graduation rate to now, you know, eighty something percent graduation rate. So I'm really excited. I want to continue that. And when we're talking about just having a broad understanding of the work that's going on over there, engaging with the students, I've seen him over there engaging with students. They love him. And I just think it's right and appropriate that the person who, along with Sandra Blackman, brought that school up to the level in which it is, that that kind, we reward Mr. Muhammad with that principalship. So my vote is going to be yes. I'm just so delighted with the work that they have done over there, knowing that it's difficult work, but they did it. And I think that Monroe can really be a pattern of success for every school in this district. Thank you, Mr. President.
Sure. Commissioner Powell?
Yes, thank you. It has been asserted that the Bilingual Education Council is, has registered vote, its opinion, this recommendation. But we've learned that two out of the three representatives on the interview committee supported this recommendation. And so it is very difficult for me to take on face value. As much as I value the input of the Bilingual Education Council, it's difficult for me to take at face value a statement that the council itself has objections. It seems more evident that one individual has an objection. Now, this is relevant beyond this conversation because we've tried to solicit input from our, the broader parent community under the PLA C, the broader student community through Student Leadership Council. And the bylaws for none of these is readily available. So in my, in my role as the Policy Committee Chair, I'm going to double down on my efforts to not only to get the bylaws, make the bylaws available, but to make them available as exhibits or attachments to either the parent involvement policy or the community involvement policy, whichever seems most appropriate, so that anyone looking for this information can find it and know whether the assertions being made reflect legitimate process. I, I believe that a legitimate process was undertaken, that there was support for this recommendation. The superintendent supports this recommendation. I support this recommendation and welcome aboard Muhammad. Thank you.
Commissioner LeBron?
Yeah, I just want to again respond that I'm requesting the BEC to also come and address the board. It's my understanding that Mina is not working, now working in the evenings as the president, but I will work around her schedule to get her and other members of the BEC to address this board on public record. And secondly, again, there is a consent decree for bilingual education in the district. And there is all, and it's a longstanding consent, like I just want to put that out there. And the bylaws are not the school district's bylaws. It is the Bilingual Education Council's bylaws. And just to clarify, I did reach out to find out what Angie's position is, and she is a spokesperson for the BEC. She's voted as a spokesperson for the BEC, but I have requested that she, along with our BEC parent reps, come and present to the board. So I just want to put that out there.
Commissioner Malloy?
Thank you. I just wanted to be recognized so that I could call the question.
Before you do that, and I'm sure you appreciate this, I was waiting to make my very brief comments. So I would, if you could just hold off on that, I would appreciate it. Commissioner Malloy?
That's fine.
Yeah, I believe very brief, just directing my comments to the superintendent and Mr. Muhammad and Rob as well. I think these are both fine selections. Both of these gentlemen reflect a real commitment to the district that you have to have as a principal. Your past has to reflect a real commitment towards the future of the children. And, and sticking around in this district when things are only easy is, is not a trait that will serve a good leader well. Both these gentlemen have been with this district for many years and have met many challenges. I know Mr. Snyder's work at the EPO, I understand that he is a district graduate. Man, we couldn't be prouder. I certainly, I guess I should speak for myself. I couldn't be prouder of an individual who's come up through the district. And because of his commitment to this district, is now sharing a moment with his family and his, his friends and his students and his other leaders within the district where he is becoming a principal of a district that he has spent many years serving. With respect to Mr. Muhammad, let me just say, without revealing any great detail, I know your, your road, particularly as a man of color, has not always been easy. And your commitment to this district and to the children of this district, no matter what language they speak, no matter what color they are, no matter how much money their parents have, is a real testament to you and your family. Not only are you committed, but you are more than capable of performing this job. And any deficits you might have, that, that you, you don't perhaps speak the language of all the students in, in that building. I know your level of commitment is such that you will compensate for that so that they do not feel left out. They do not feel that they are the other students. And, and also let me just say, if I was, if anybody had any question about your ability, your commitment, you took a non-existing football field that hadn't held any team members and created a powerful testament to opportunity that had not existed before in creating a football team there. That is just one of the many ways in which, most of which are reflection of your commitment to the academic standards. Vice President Elliott has spoken of how you and Sandra turned that building around. We could not have asked for, in my mind, a, a more imperfect candidate. And what I mean by that is nobody is perfect. In this world, we're not going to get everybody who fits the perfect bill. But we found the best imperfect candidate in you and, and Mr. Muhammad and, and Rob and Jason. Let me just say, I thank you for your diligence and your longstanding commitment to this district and your effort to continue to provide, provide the kind of education that our children need. Superintendent, thank you very much for the selection. Thank you, Chris, for your work. And for every citizen that participated in the selection process, I think your decision will be reflected and continued positive results for both of these schools. Thank you. I think that does it. Let's go ahead. Commissioner Malloy?
Oh my goodness. Okay. Thank you though for that. Yeah, so we're calling the question?
Yes. Let's go ahead and vote then. This is Resolution 848A. All those in favor of Resolution 848 indicate A indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The ayes have it?
Nay. I just want to put it in record. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, Commissioner LeBron. There is one nay, and that is Commissioner LeBron. Superintendent, is there some additional comment that you'd like to make now that the appointment has been, the appointments have been made?
I would. President White, thank you for just brief indulgence. I'll start at the elementary level. Dr. Snyder, if you would come on screen, I'd just like to congratulate you for your appointment at school number forty-five. I have gotten to know you over the past year. And when we had our one-on-one conversation, I felt very pleased with your responses and very encouraged by your vision and the direction that you want to take this school in. I know you have the support of your school community. And I just wanted to formally in front of the Board of Education and in front of those who are watching, to say congratulations to you and we're looking forward to your leadership as you move forward in your new role as of July first. So congratulations.
Thank you very much. I'm really looking forward to it. I apologize. I was in a suit a little while ago and I thought after the resolution I ran to my daughter's T-ball game. But I'm really looking forward to being at forty-five and continuing to grow that community and working with those families. So thank you for the appointment.
Thank you, Dr. Snyder. Welcome to the new role. And Mr. Jason Muhammad, if you'll come on screen, I'd like to certainly welcome you to your new role at Monroe. For those of you who don't know, I have known Mr. Muhammad for a long time when he was a college freshman at the University of Rochester. He was an English major. And I remember his early days as an English teacher at Marshall. And I know about your decorated career as a football coach. But more recently, I had the opportunity to see you in action when I was an assistant commissioner. You were an assistant principal at the time and I was very impressed with your knowledge base and your commitment to your scholars at Monroe. We've had, in our one-on-one meeting, I asked you some questions about relationships. I asked questions about receivership and your thoughts about moving forward and also connecting with our unique learners in, in our, in our, at the school. And so I just want to say congratulations to you formally in front of the Board of Education. And thank you for stepping up to the plate and accepting our offer of Monroe Upper School Principal. So congratulations, Jason.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to meeting and overcoming all obstacles in our path. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, President White, for that indulgence.
Absolutely. Again, congratulations to both Rob and Jason. We look forward to your continued service to the district. All right, let's move on with our agenda. Next item on the agenda is the Governance Committee. Commissioner Malloy, you have the gavel.
Thank you, President White. Good evening to Dr. Myers Small, Dr. Jallow, executive cabinet members, and my fellow board members and all of you from the community listening in. Board governance deals directly with how we conduct ourselves and monitor our actions as board members. And this committee oversees training and professional development to help us enhance our ability to perform our roles as commissioners. We're also responsible for maintaining an effective working relationship with our superintendent and evaluating our superintendent. We'll be talking about that tonight. Governance facilitates the orientation of our new, new members through our board staff. And as a board, we are additionally charged with supervising and evaluating our board staff. Finally, the Governance Committee organizes board retreats for ongoing professional development related to our interpersonal relationships. And we will continue to take input and recommendations from our state monitor, Dr. Shelley Jallow, to develop adequate governance policy to help us better meet our district and board goals. Before we begin, I'd like to publicly thank Board Executive Assistant Francine Scott and Board Community Liaison Specialist Rahima Nguyen for filling in for our board clerk for the past week, who was on a really well-deserved vacation. We are really appreciative of your time and expertise and your professionalism. So thank you to your both, or thank you to you both for all of your help this week. All right. So originally on our agenda, our first agenda item was to review and accept the minutes from our prior governance meeting, which was May fourth, twenty twenty-one. We're actually going to be approving that next Tuesday instead. We'll have that ready then. So I'm going to go right on to our next agenda item, which is about our board polling tool. As you know, we have engaged in gathering feedback from board members and other select board participants. In other words, Superintendent Myers Small, our state monitor, Superintendent Nelms, just about meeting efficiencies. And so we've been doing this for quite some time. Our Zoom polling occurred between October twenty twenty through April twenty twenty-one. And this included data from twenty-two special meetings and committees of the whole. We had seven business meetings that we pulled data from as well as two other meetings. On average, we had between four and seven commissioners choosing to participate in the poll and our average was five commissioners. So the poll results, I'm just going to quickly go through these. The poll results are as follows. So our first poll question was, did we adhere to the start and end times as stated on the agenda? And as time has progressed, it seems like we have veered away from these proposed times. Our second and third poll questions deal with providing, or providing materials by board, or the provided materials rather, by our board staff. So did we receive materials with sufficient time for you to prepare for the meeting? Results indicate that we are headed in a better direction on this front. And of course, the third question was, were the materials sufficient to assist you in forming an opinion on the decision made by the board? And again, it indicated that we need some possible improvement in this area. Our next poll question relates to participation by other board members. And it includes the question, were you satisfied with your opportunity to participate in the debate? So we do see a very slight decline here. The next question relates to, or is relating to participation. And it's, were you satisfied with the manner in which other board members contributed to the debate? We've remained, I think, pretty consistent in our responses here. So in terms of questions related to our standards of conduct, we asked if there were any violations of our code of conduct. And there is a slight increase here. We also asked if there were any violations of our bylaws, which indicates a decrease. Our next question dealt with meeting chair effectiveness with the question, was the chair effective in allowing all sides to be heard while bringing the matter to a decision? And we did see a slight decrease here. Our final two questions dealt with board impact. With the first question asking if we had done anything to make a clear difference in the lives of our students where we saw an opinion decrease. And then the final question was, did we do anything that had a positive impact on any one of the district's key performance areas where we again noticed a decrease? So the question is, how do we make this polling more effective in gathering the information that we need? Our board staff, they've been actively working to redesign or reformat this tool with our tech crew over the past few months. And they have come up with the following suggestions. So the first is to create two separate polls to be conducted after special meetings and or committee meetings, or one poll after executive session, as we've been doing over the past months. Another suggestion is that we complete a Google form, which will be completed by members within two days of the meeting. There were some concerned about, concerns about taking a poll too far after a meeting had ended or too long, or I'm trying to phrase that differently. And the final suggestion was then to complete a Google form poll posted in the Zoom chat to be completed during the meeting, as we currently have been doing. So with that being said, at this time, I'd like to open all of this up for discussions, for a discussion with two questions in mind. One, would you like to see our questions restructured? And then secondly, how would you like to see these polls administered? So I'll open it up for discussion. Let me just open this up. I do see some hands. I've got to get to the right screen here so I can see everybody. See, I'll go to my participants. Okay, I see Commissioner Powell and then Commissioner, Vice President Elliott.
Yeah, thanks. Was one of the concepts of looking at other formats so that we'd have the opportunity to ask more questions? Or is it just about the timing?
I'm sorry, ask that one more time.
So we, the, the current survey system limits us to ten questions. My first thought on that was that maybe if there's an area where we've been holding steady or getting better, that we could take that question out and expand on the questions that relate to board goals or performance areas. Understanding that there's a lot of those, we probably have to think of a way to cycle out and, and just put in, you know, one or two performance areas and for a specific duration and see how we're doing. And then switch to another set of performance areas. But before even asking that question, I, I have to ask, is one of the objectives of looking at different formats to expand the number of questions we're able to ask?
I think that, I think that was one of the original goals. And Polly, please feel free to hop in and correct here, but I think that with the Zoom poll, we are just limited to ten questions. So I think that that was, that had something to do with the decision to, to look at other formats. Or I think there are limitations on Zoom in general. Can we, the board clerk, Wade, can you comment to that, on that?
Well, so Zoom does allow us to, to, to offer multiple polls during, during the Well, so Zoom does allow us to offer multiple polls during the time of the meeting. And so, we could additionally ask more questions. But I think the issue might be also timing as it relates to, you know, how many questions can we really get through during a board meeting, considering there's agenda items, et cetera. But definitely, as we've looked at different options for the poll, we are considering other options that will allow for more in-depth review of questions, maybe asking short answer questions and things like that, which are harder to facilitate over the Zoom interface.
Thank you. I see Vice President Elliott. Oops, Vice President Elliott? Can she hear? Vice President Elliott, I saw that your hand was raised. Did you lower your hand?
I believe she's frozen, Commissioner Malloy.
Oh, okay. I don't see other hands. I'll give her a second to see if she comes back online. Is she frozen or just muted?
Looks like just mute. Oh, no. I think she's, it's like delayed.
Or just a lag of some type?
Yes.
All right. Vice President Elliott, we can come back to you. It seems like there's a delay or a lag. All right. Are there any other questions before we circle back to Vice President Elliott? I saw President White, I saw that you had put a thumbs up. I just wanted to know if you could offer anything in response to that. Oh, I also
No, the only thing I was saying is I like Commissioner Powell's idea of, you know, okay, we recognize areas where we're pretty steady or, you know, in the 80 to 90, 85 to 90% success rate, that maybe we're moving that question and going deeper into questions that perhaps we're not performing as well. I don't know how that idea would be fleshed out, but I like that way of, you know, drilling down on the areas where we're not doing as well and maybe moving away from the questions where we're consistently doing well.
Thank you for that input. I see Commissioner Clark. Go ahead.
Yes, I wanted to respond to one of the initial questions about, "Do we maintain the current survey format, or do we move to Google, or do we do it two days later?" I think the way we do it now is the most effective way because everything is fresh in our minds and it's not something that we need to get back to and try to remember. And as far as the questions, I think the question, I mean, the survey really reflects where we are. Because when I look at the areas where we have declined and need improvement, I mean, I agree 100% and I think most of our other commissioners would agree also. And I kind of disagree with taking away the areas where we're doing very well because I think we need to maintain that. We need to make sure that there's no slippage as we continue down this road.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark, for that insight. Thank you so much. I did see briefly Vice President Elliott's hand go up again, but now I'm not seeing her on.
She's just rejoining the Zoom.
Oh, yes, okay.
Vice President Elliott, can you hear us?
I can hear you. So, sorry about that. I'm getting a new computer sometime tomorrow or the next day, so hopefully we won't have these problems. The question I have is, how long do we have to continue to do these surveys? And do we really find that these surveys are effective? Are we just doing them just to be, you know, doing these surveys? And, you know, have we actually seen some change? I think some of that seems to suggest that there's been some change. And on the other hand, I think one of the areas saw a decrease. And so, what's our next step, you know, with this particular survey?
Thank you, Vice President Elliott. Yeah, I think that those questions are extremely important for us to consider moving forward. I think it's always good to gather data in this regard, but you're making some really great points here. So, I think this warrants further discussion. If you have recommendations for perhaps other questions that we could ask instead, or perhaps maybe suggestions on other ways that we can monitor our progress as a board towards meeting some of our goals, that would be helpful too, if we wanted to brainstorm that as a board. But thank you for those comments, Vice President Elliott. Appreciate it. I do see President White. Go ahead.
Yeah, just to respond to what Vice President Elliott said, I see an ongoing need for this survey. It is a way in which we can monitor our behavior, our success or our failure. It takes less than a minute a night. And if we need to modify, you know, I happen to like Commissioner Powell's idea, but I heard what Commissioner Clark said. And he's like, "Let's keep our eye on the prize, whether we're doing well or not." I could live with that. But in the end, I think doing the survey is of immense importance because it allows us, I mean, we're not the only body that struggles sometimes with having efficient, effective meetings. You only need to get on YouTube and you can see that. But I think this has provided us ongoing, an internal way, an internal mechanism. And that's why we did it. So, I don't see this ending anytime soon.
I think it's most valuable too, if we're actually using this data to spur future conversations, right, as a board, so that we continue to reflect and in that reflective work of striving to become better. Meliora, right, you are getting ever better. So, I, you know, I like the fact that we are doing polls, but I understand some of the concerns surrounding that. And let's just make sure we're having those conversations using this data. That's how it's going to be the best use of our time.
So, let me ask this. So, when will we discuss this? Will this be a part of the board retreat's agenda?
Yeah, I mean, that's a great question. We could either make it an ongoing agenda item for governance, I would think, or we could continue to have these conversations at our retreats. What would you prefer, Vice President?
Yeah, I think it probably needs to be discussed at the retreat. I mean, I don't have any comments one way or the other about it. But I think that there were some areas that we improved upon. There's some areas that we went down on. And I think that that needs to be discussed, probably in a board retreat setting.
Excellent. Thank you, Vice President. Commissioner Powell?
You know, I think that in the areas that we went down, I think it's really more a case of, in practicing the use of the surveys, we become more honest. You know, and especially with regard to start and end times, our frustration shows when meetings go very long or when technical difficulties cause us to start late. I don't remember every slide, but that was, the starting and ending times showed a big drop from beginning to end. So, I think there are explanations for that. But I do also think that knowing that we're going to evaluate ourselves causes people to think about how they're going to interact with their peers in this public session.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell. Commissioner Clark?
Yes, I just wanted to indicate that I did agree with Commissioner Powell in one sense. But for me, it's irregardless whether we go over time or not. It's the substance of the discussion. And as long as I feel that we're making progress and we're making a difference and we're making solid decisions, I have no problem being on the midnight. So, I'll always answer that question, "Yes, we started and ended on time" because otherwise, we leave out very relevant, you know, discussions that we need to have as a board.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. Do we have any other comments on this matter? At this time, any other comments? All right. Well, thank you so much for the robust discussion on this. And we will definitely circle back on this topic with our board staff to either create a different polling tool for next year to better reflect all this feedback, or it'll remain the same. This is just an ongoing discussion. And hopefully, we can have that discussion at our next retreat and circle back. All right. So, moving on in the agenda, I just wanted to provide an update on our upcoming board retreats and our professional development. So, we are going to be continuing our work with Dr. Malik Mohammed, who has been facilitating the restorative work in which we've been engaging regarding our interpersonal relationships as board members. That is slated, or our next session with Dr. Mohammed is slated from Monday, June 14th, from 5:30 to 7:00 or 7:30. Dr. Mohammed has been instrumental in helping us work through a variety of challenges. And I know that we're all anxious to continue this critical work together as a governing body. Additionally, we are finalizing the committee calendar dates for next year, following our meeting restructuring resolution passed at the board business meeting last Thursday, May 27th. And we will have a specific date in August shortly for our annual meeting to set our board goals for the 21-22 school year. We will have more information to disseminate to commissioners very soon. And perhaps the most important reminder regarding our, just board responsibilities is pertaining to the update to our upcoming superintendent evaluation, which must be completed by individual commissioners no later than June 22nd. The superintendent is finalizing her self-evaluation and will have that available for commissioners via Super Evale by June 9th. It's essential that individual commissioners look through the self-evaluation and complete their individual assessments between June 10th and June 22nd. So, again, you have between June 10th and June 22nd to look at her self-evaluation. So, that June 22nd date is really important. It's going to allow the system to consolidate all the commissioner responses into one evaluation on June 25th. And once it's consolidated, we're going to use the document at our June 29th retreat with the superintendent to conduct her yearly performance evaluation. So, because this relates specifically to an employee's employment and performance, this retreat will be conducted in closed session. So, please reach out to Francine for Super Evale login information if you don't have that. And Board Clerk Wade has also indicated that she is happy to walk commissioners through the process as she has just completed additional training on the Super Evale tool. So, I know that this will be very helpful for us as board members. And thank you to Francine and Callia on this. Are there any questions relating to any of this before we move on? I don't see any hands. All right. So, the key dates to remember, you have from June 10th through June 22nd to complete that performance evaluation, or not performance evaluation, but your own assessment, the commissioner responses, so that they can be compiled by the 25th. All right. Our next agenda item is a quick update by Acting Counsel Carling on a return to in-person meetings. Counselor Carling?
Hey, good evening. The executive order that has put the hold on the need for in-person meetings was extended again by another week. It currently runs through June 24th, which is the Friday following our final board business meeting of this school year. So, that's the update I have for you at the moment. They seem to be steadily extending every seven days and they go 30 out from the day they're extended. So, I'll check again tomorrow. They're generally backdated to Monday and posted on Wednesday, so I'll check tomorrow. But for now, it looks like we're clear through the end of the school year here to continue in the Zoom format. If anything changes, I'll obviously let you know. And at some point, we'll have to come up with a plan for starting in July.
Thank you, Counselor Carling. All right, let me get to our next item. Our next item is an update. I'm just going to provide a quick update on our recommended racial bias training. We continue to research possible providers. And after reviewing this research, I'd like to suggest the following consideration. I'd like to suggest that instead of using a specific vendor or provider to create like a one-size-fits-all training for current board members and our incoming board members, I'd like that we maybe consider using the information gathered by board staff two months ago to maybe create as a board, a set of expectations for all members to use in their boardwork regarding racial bias training, et cetera. This set of expectations should include terminology or training that some of our board members might already have a firm grasp of. And I just want to make sure that, you know, that we respect that we're all coming from very different cultural backgrounds and have, you know, our own very unique set of lived experiences that don't mirror one another's. And so, my concern is that a cookie cutter sort of training isn't going to be useful for some of our members versus others. So, the type of training that, for instance, I need, for instance, as a, you know, white female with my own lived experiences, is not going to mirror the needs or experiences of some of my other board colleagues, even those who might look like me. So, I'd like to suggest that we maybe create a list of expectations as a board with the understanding that individual board members will work with board staff to find appropriate anti-bias training tailored to our individual needs. And perhaps we could draft language around these training expectations that include a minimum number of hours of training. Or perhaps we can log our hours somewhere for the community's benefit and transparency about this critical work. So, I guess the advantages to this type of suggestion would be twofold. You know, we aren't mandating training that people have already had. That would be a waste of time and effort. And secondly, it might be a better use of our financial resources if we don't lock ourselves into a specific training. That would be a major expense. If we use the research that we've already worked so hard on and that we've already compiled on these various providers, providing commissioners with a list of possible trainings that would meet the requirements, would provide a more personalized experience that we can reflect on and actually grow from. And then we can document that to the public, perhaps in our own self-evaluations. So, I guess I just wanted to gauge people's thoughts on this and have a brief discussion on how people feel, if we want to have a cookie cutter sort of training or do we want to try to make it more personalized? Any thoughts? I'm not seeing any hands. Oh, Commissioner Powell, go ahead.
I'm sorry I'm always first, but I guess prior to this suggestion, I had always thought of racial bias training as a group responsibility that we should meet as a group to do, not unlike our board retreat and interpersonal development work. But hearing this for the first time, I do see the merit. There is a lot of, you know, training units out there by, you know, whether it be NISBA or National School Board Association or some of the consultants and providers who are offering this training to our teachers and administrators. Who's to say that we wouldn't benefit by sitting in on training already underway to school principals and teachers? I'm open to that suggestion.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell. Yeah, just to follow up on just what I was saying, I'm kind of looking at this through an educator's lens. You know, as a teacher, I have a professional focus that I do every year as part of my APPR process. It's part of, you know, what New York State mandates. And how valuable would it be if we could be reflecting on our own experiences as commissioners? It's also personal. And I think that we would gain so much more from it considering that we're all in different spaces on that continuum that is racial awareness and social justice. I see President White. I see your hand. Go ahead.
Yeah, you know, this is the first, I've heard of this idea or proposal. And so, my comments are just sort of a first blush attempt to provide some feedback. Let me just say, I think, I don't know logistically how you would do that. I mean, this is a very complicated subject matter. Some people, and I'm not referring to any of my colleagues, but it's on the issue of racism and bigotry. Some people have no love Some people have no level of self-awareness, no, no understanding of what is needed to address the issues that they have. And again, I'm not speaking about anybody specifically. So I, I do think, and then if you did, who would coordinate identifying where to get the pieces from? I, I guess my initial thought is that, at least initially, there has to be somebody brought in who understands this subject comprehensively, could look at each board member and maybe figure out through conversating with them what is necessary to get them to a place where we could be, all be leaders of, on this issue of racism and bigotry. I just think it is far, and again, this is just, I'm not trying to be critical, I think it's just far too complicated for us to be evaluating ourselves, and you may not even be proposing that. But I do think we need to bring in, at least initially, somebody to help us understand the lay of the land as it relates to each person and comprehensively, and then begin to suggest us what we might need individually or collectively. I just don't think we can do it individually. I don't, but I could be wrong. Thanks.
And I certainly respect your comments, President White. I think really, it is such a personal, it is such a personal journey for, for every person, and so that's why I think that that personal approach might be best. But I do like your idea of having someone initially perhaps meet one-on-one with commissioners, if we could identify someone who help, can help bring us to the, or recommend resources that we use, or perhaps trainings that might benefit individual commissioners. That way this work can be done, it's truly self-reflective then. People aren't feeling anxiety about where they are on that continuum and can actually do the important work, instead of just kind of the sit and get that we, that we have sometimes in, in trainings. And I know that that lecture style of, of some of the trainings that are out there is not as beneficial maybe as it could be. And we want to make sure that everyone's actually engaging in the work and being honest with themselves. And I think that, I love your suggestion for that reason, having someone initially come in to maybe help us find those resources as individuals. So thank you. Were there any other hands? I thought I saw Commissioner Clark's hand briefly, but not to put you on the spot.
I didn't raise my hand, but I do agree with President White that we have someone come in and do the foundational training and the assessment to, to see where people are and, and make recommendations on the type of training they receive.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. Thank you. Are there any other comments at this time? All right, well, we have researched, we have different providers that have been researched by, by the board. We continue to gather more providers. And so at an upcoming meeting, I'm hoping that we can maybe come up with a list at least of expectations. I'm hoping to draft something with, with our other, with the board staff that's reflective of the work that they already did a couple of months ago, so that it really mirrors that work that they did. And I'm hoping to, you know, talk with Dr. Jao more about how, how this is going to be most valuable as educational leaders, the type of training that would most benefit us as educational leaders. I see Commissioner Adams, go ahead.
Okay, you had mentioned about people not having to go through a training that they already been through. I said, we cannot be giving out waivers. It obviously did not work, more than likely. A lot of times people go through these PDs and they just be there and they just sign in and sign out. And the same thing with us, we, just because we've been, we signed a paper saying that we did some hours of this, that's, that's like a waiver. No, we cannot be giving out no waivers. If we're trying to get some legitimate growth, then everybody's got to be on board. So no waivers.
I wasn't suggesting that we have waivers. I think that, perhaps I didn't explain that as clearly as I could. I'm not suggesting that, that we have any waivers, but I am suggesting that the type of training that I need, Commissioner Adams, is going to look very different than maybe the type of training that, that you are in need of. And so if we can personalize that and, and conduct ourselves in a way that allows us to be open to the types of training that, that we need, I think that's where we actually going to see some growth. And so no waivers. I agree. Did anyone else want to comment? Okay, so thank you so much for adding to that discussion. We're going to circle back and hopefully have, make some progress on that. We'll begin drafting that shortly, and we'll touch base, I think, at our next meeting. All right, our last item tonight is just regarding board travel and professional development expenses. So as you know, we implemented a spending freeze on these expenditures, not just as a board, but district-wide this year. And I had asked our finance department just to quickly offer to the public a quick recap of this. So it's my understanding that either Superintendent Meyer Small or someone on behalf of the finance department is just going to provide us very, very brief overview of why we have freezes and why they're necessary. Is there someone who can speak to that?
Sure, Commissioner Malloy, I will. Back in the fall, when we were in, certainly had been a couple of months in the pandemic, we had a discussion with the board and made the decision that we would implement some measures because we were, we were concerned about our fiscal outlook. And so we always try to take measures that are so far away from the classroom, right, that aren't directly impacting our scholars. So one of the things that we implemented, certainly hiring freezing, freezes, excuse me, but one of the other things that we said, because we're in the midst of a pandemic, we need to freeze any type of out-of-town travel for conferences. So we instituted that and put that into effect, again, because we were really concerned about the fact that we thought 20%, we needed to, you know, reduce by 20%. And you know that in central office, we had many departments that reduced by 20%, at least 20%. So that was a measure that we put in place, given the fact that we were in the midst of a pandemic and that we wouldn't be traveling any, anyway, so that would be a way to, that would be a measure that would make sense, that would be far away from the classroom.
Thank you, Superintendent Meyer Small.
Sure.
Thank you. All right, let me just move on to our.
I have a question.
Oh. Let's see, I don't see.
So that means no traveling, no going to NISBA in October?
No, that was for the, this current school year that we're in, so 2021.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. So, see. So yeah, I know that I had asked Board Clerk Wade to just offer to provide a recap of our board and travel budget freeze from last year, but it, it looks like, it sounds like Superintendent Meyer Small, you've done that for us.
I do have one question though, Commissioner Malloy. Only because, so, so I know, and thank you Superintendent Meyer Small for providing an update on the travel freeze, but I know that there's also a spending freeze that goes into effect normally in February, that takes place where budgets are capped and then whatever money is not spent is then swept. So that is kind of the, one of the things that I was hoping that the board could also discuss is maybe anticipating the spending of funds if it is that persons are interested in attending, or not just, not just travel, but also PDs and things that are even local ahead of time, before that February freeze if possible, so that we can anticipate the spending, so that we are not spending after that freeze that, that goes into place in February.
Great clarification, Callia, yes. Thank you.
Yeah, plus with some of those, particularly like the law PDs, I, those are the ones that I most like to attend as well. And those, you know, tend to be, well, they tend to be local for the most part. So, you know, I would advocate for those kinds of PD sessions and that money be allocated for, for those.
Thank you, Vice President Elliott. Yeah, I believe the, the law one offered through NISBA is actually here in Rochester on July 15. So I know that was something I was interested in as well. And so certainly anything that is a NISBA or MISBA sort of professional development is super valuable for, for all of us as board members. So we'll keep that in mind. And Callia, if you could answer, it's my understanding that we saved about $20,000 on the freeze from this past year?
Well, so we had budgeted in last year's board budget to, for out-of-town travel to be placed at $20,000. But of course, because of the pandemic, none, none of those funds were really spent because of the fact that those were, there was no traveling taking place. In addition to the fact that as part of the state monitor legislation, all out-of-town travel has to be approved by the state monitor. So we did not incur expenses as it related to that. However, there are certain expenses that the board did agree to incur as it relates to updating or, or DAS and, and things as it relates to COVID, you know, trying to make things more virtually accessible. And so that budget has been utilized for, for, for some other things as well. But yes, there was no spending for out-of-town travel in this past year with the pandemic.
All right, so any money that we had saved, I know we talked about this earlier in the afternoon, and you had explained that any extra money or funds, it gets rolled, it doesn't get rolled over into the next year. It, it, so it's not a carryover, or I don't remember the terminology you used.
Yes, so, and this might be explained a little bit better by, or CFO, or maybe Dr. Meyer Small, but essentially for all departments, monies that are budgeted for the current school year, if they're, if they're not utilized, they do get swept and put back normally into the general fund, because it's all the districts, the districts' funds. And of course, at the time, you know, we are in a deficit, and so any unspent monies goes back to, to, to cover district costs.
Okay, thank you for that. Yeah, it just makes me think that I'd be really interested to see more info from finance on carryovers from maybe other district departments and just spring some more questions here. All right, so you were all provided with an Excel document that outlined our budget for the 2122 school year. We've allocated for in-district as well as out-of-district travel. Our in-district is pretty minimal, it's only $80. Our out-of-district is about $16,000. Our professional and technical services allocated budget is almost $60,000. And additionally, our professional development budget is about $8,000. Callia, can you tell us that technical services allocated, or the professional and technical services allocated budget, that was almost $60,000? What are those types of items?
So professional and technical services generally cover services that are, take place with, you know, NISBA, when we have to do trainings, when we have to bring in professionals. As, as it relates to the fact that we have a state monitor and there are certain requests for certain PDs and things like that, money is put aside. In the past, when we had or distinguished educator, salary was paid out of that budget line, those kinds of things. So that budget line is generally a little bit higher, not that it's, you know, it's used every year or anything like that, but it's generally a little bit higher based on the demands of, you know, or state requirements.
Okay, excellent. And so like a service like Dr. Mohammed, the restorative work that we're doing with him, and that would come from that, that budget.
Yes, yes.
Perfect, thank you. So I guess what we need to determine is just how these funds will be used throughout the course of the year. And of course, professional development is just critical for our board members. And I'm hoping that, you know, we can just engage in a short conversation, round robin or back and forth. You know, I'm wondering, how do we divvy up available funds between commissioners, right? Like, so do we do that currently? How far in advance do we need to put in for professional development? Are there exceptions? So I'm hoping that those questions, that we can start talking about those as a board, and I will open the floor up for discussion. So should we divide up these funds equally? How should we do this? Vice President Elliott, go ahead.
Well, I have two points to, to make. One is a little bit off topic, but I think that, well, let me just say this, we have to consider, because we're talking about the 2122 budget, we will have at least two or maybe three new board members in January. So we have to consider what their needs are going to be. So that's one, that's one piece of that. And you know, their learning curve is really low, so, or high, however you put it. So we have to consider that. But I also think that there are some board members who tend to travel more than others that they need to have, you know, in terms of their, to reduce their learning curve, they need to have more PE, PD, you know, being able to go to different conferences. I think that was the case with Commissioner, former Commissioner, what's Natalie's last name, can't even think of her last name now. You know, she tended to have used, you know, went on a number of professional development trips because she needed to, to do that. I don't think it's necessary, that's, this is just me, to, you know, divide it amongst, equally among seven board members, because seven board members may not need to attend those sessions. So that's my, my position on that. Now, what I do think that we, we need to consider, this is a little off topic, we need to check with our board staff to see if they're still able to handle the level of work that they're handling. That's, that's going to be very important. Should we perhaps, we've got to be mindful, if we're going to continue with this level of staff, we have to be mindful that we cannot, as board members, ask, continue to ask them to do all of this work without there being some, some additional support. So I would have us to consider that, and I don't know if we can do it in this particular budget season at this point, but it's, it's important. I don't know, you know, we may be wearing them down, and we have to look at that. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice President. I really like all the points that you made, and I think they're all very relevant. To the last point that you made, I think that maybe we could make that as a future agenda item for, for governance, if that would feel comfortable with that discussion.
Assess that.
All right, thank you. President White.
Yeah, on the issue of staffing, I agree, I think we need to revisit that issue. And on the first issue of traveling, just so that no one has to reinvent the wheel, you all may recall, and I think most of you were here at the time, we did devise a system of allocating travel. And I think Marisol was here when we did it. I, I think it was done, was done by Marisol Lopez, helped us devise that system. If it wasn't devised then, it was devised under Shenay Lee. But you, you should look at what we did before. Some may say we're beyond that, we shouldn't have to do that, that's not fair, that's not equitable. But there was a system devised, and you might want to throw that back into an agenda and have people revisit that and decide whether we want to change it.
I know, certainly, and thank you, President White. I know that Commissioner Hallmark had done some work on this prior to my being sworn in, so I will go back and see if I can find those items. I know, I just vaguely remember sitting in on a meeting that we were allowed to sit in on prior to being sworn in.
And I would just say, it went beyond Commissioner Hallmark. The board agreed how to divvy up that travel allotment. We just stopped doing it because of COVID.
Gotcha. All right, this is valuable information to me as I piece together that history, and I'll certainly be meeting with you and with Vice President Elliott to, to make kind of next steps on what to bring before the board. Are there any other comments at this time? Any other comments? All right, well, thank you again for the, the discussion. We'll circle back next month after we've compiled this information. And with that, that ends our governance committee for the, for the evening. I will now pass the gavel to my colleague, Commissioner Powell, who will be leading our policy meeting. Commissioner Powell.
Okay, thank you. Can y'all hear me all right? Okay. So the agenda lays out what we need to accomplish today pretty clearly. We're going to start policy with a standing item of NISBA policy updates with our counsel, Steve Carling. I don't believe we have anything pending, do we, Steve?
No, there's, there's one that I think I'm going to make as a recommendation that came out, but I, I think I put it over to, to the administration late last.
to the administration late last week and with the, we haven't circled back around. Um, but it, it's, it, it deals with, um, the, dealing with remote instruction. So it won't really be something we need to worry about at the moment because, you know, we're, we're wrapping up the school year. So we have plenty of time on it. Uh, but I'll come forward with something at the next meeting if we're going to make a recommendation on that. That's the only item that I saw that was of any, uh, new, um, changes at least.
This is different from the student attendance changes that we're already set to discuss?
Uh, you know what? Maybe there are.
There's someone.
I don't remember if I advanced them. Do you guys? I didn't, I didn't want to speak if I had. So, um, or if I hadn't. So I think actually, yeah, it, it does. I think it is actually in the student attendance policy. It's, it's one paragraph about remote instruction. So, okay, good. I am ahead of that then. Okay.
If there's something more, we can take it to subcommittee and then bring it next month.
Nope. Nope. That was only, that was the only one change that came out of the packet of information that we had from this, but I thought we should adopt. So.
Okay.
All right. Good.
Um, thank you. Going to discussion items. Um, uh, the, uh, Dr. Jallow, uh, made a require, said a requirement that we signed on to, uh, regarding, uh, a long-term plan for our, um, data systems. Uh, Callie, if you want to put up, uh, Steve's draft. Um, this, this draft, uh, essentially, uh, spells out what Dr. Jallow's, uh, requirements of us are. Is, is that correct, Steve?
It was my, uh, it was my rough attempt to capture it. Yes. I, I worked with Glenn Van De Water from IMNT. And this is kind of what we came up with as far as just a, uh, you know, a template for the board to work with to, uh, and with Dr. Jow. I just wanted to get something on paper for you all to be able to start off of, but, um, she and I have not discussed it specifically.
Right. Um, now, so, um, it's here for y'all to read, uh, but, um, understanding that it really doesn't do anything except, uh, direct the superintendent to do that which Dr. Jallow directed us to do. Uh, Callia, can you put up, uh, the regulation 8300 for us? The, the language you just saw could easily be the governing language for this regulation that already exists, where the superintendent sets, sets out a technology governance committee. And, um, so the language Steve presented could be the, um, e- essentially the scope and purpose doc, uh, document for this, uh, regulation that already exists. Eighty, and we can call it 8300. Alternatively, we could have a broader discussion about what other long-term investments we need to make. Um, and, and create, craft a finance, um, area or finance series policy that, um, rolls up, um, any number of requirements that we might have that need long-term financial considerations. A, a great example is that when we last discussed this, uh, idea of a long-term information technology, uh, plan was accidentally, we started having conversation about textbooks. I mean, we currently have textbook adoption committees, but do we, uh, do we anticipate textbook adoptions in our budget process? Do we set enough funds aside? Is it part of our requirement of the superintendent? When she delivers a budget to us, that there be, um, significant resources regular, every year for, um, textbook adoptions? So the guidance I need as the policy chair from the board is, uh, is one of direction. Do we want to have a broader discussion about what long-term, um, planning the, uh, we want to, the superintendent to focus on? And if so, what topics besides IT and textbooks should we be raising, um, to, to a higher profile? And, um, you could shout those out now or you could, um, just, uh, email them to me. Um, but before I go into our next subcommittee, um, to, to really tackle this policy, uh, I need a little guidance from my peers. So I'm looking for comments or raised hands. So question is, do we want to, um, satisfy Dr. Jallow's immediate requirement and, and do something along the lines of a policy 8300? Using language, something along the lines of what Steve posted. And Callie, you can put that up again if you like. Or do we want to have a broader discussion about long-term financial planning? Oh, thank you, Rahima. I didn't know it was you doing screen share. Man, I see your hand.
Yeah, long-term financial planning.
That's your vote?
That's my vote. Thanks.
Well, thank you for launching the discussion. Can, can I get, um, pros and cons from others? Do you like that idea? And why? Do you not like that idea and why? I mean, two voices to such. Dr. Jallow, please weigh in.
I'm, I'm just curious. How does long-term financial planning ensure that the district doesn't find themselves in a sim- similar situation where books are 20 years old, technology for finances outdated, technology for special ed is no longer purposeful and useful? How, how does one connect to the other? And I really just want to understand it because the intent of this was to make sure that you never, as a district, find yourself with outdated systems, outdated resources that impact instruction and impact, um, systems and procedures that you have in the district.
Great question, Dr. Jallow. I think you, you've practically made the case for a policy within the, um, the finance series, the 6,000 series, um, that would essentially direct the superintendent's budget planning. Okay. Uh, and would go beyond just satisfying IT, uh, limit, um, obstacles that we have, uh, that you, that you identified in your, um, in your report. The language either way, uh, I think needs to be much more specific. The language crafted so far simply directs the superintendent to, um, maintain up-to-date information systems. Uh, that doesn't, that doesn't really give any guidance as to, um, you know, what is up to date? How old is obsolete? Uh, I think we need to get much more, uh, like, uh, drilled down into that. Uh, or as the regulation currently states, rely entirely on the IT committee to tell us when it's time to take appropriate action. And, and, and that spine so long as that committee is being forward-looking enough that they can show us the, the horizon in ample time to budget for it. So that's exactly the guidance I'm hoping to get from my colleagues. Um, if, if we go the, um, the finance series route, um, I would invite, um, uh, our CFO into the conversation during our sub, in subcommittee and, and ask for her input on how we go about, um, structuring a long-term financial plan for those, um, sensitive areas. And, um, if, um, either if you could write down each of the areas that you have concern for, or if Callia can pull that out of the, out of the, uh, recording, um, that'll give us a lot more guidance on, on, on what to focus on. Are, are you in favor?
I can do that. I can work with Callia on that.
Okay. Um, are, are you essentially speaking in favor of a term financial planning policy?
I'm, I'm not willing to weigh in before your colleagues.
Okay.
Um, but my intent, as long as my intent is, is addressed, um, I'm satisfied however way you choose to do it. I just more concerned with the outcome. And the outcome is that you have technology, you have management systems, you have curriculum materials that makes sense for an organization dedicated to academics and scholarship.
Right. And he, and each time you state that you're describing something that goes beyond just the technology. So I'm interpreting here, uh, uh, for, uh, notwithstanding that you want to hear from colleagues, I am interpreting a need for something more comprehensive. Uh, Amy, I, uh, Commissioner Malloy, I see your hand is up.
Yeah, thank you. And just for all the reasons that Dr. Jow has outlined, um, I, I would like to see some specific long-term planning in this regard, similar to what, uh, Vance said.
Okay. Um, so I've heard from a couple of my colleagues, Cynthia, uh, Ricardo, Beatrice.
I was, I was out of the, um, Zoom with, uh, Steve presented that policy. So I'm not able to comment on it actually.
Okay. Thanks for your candor. Anybody else? Commissioner Adams, Commissioner LeBron? Um, well, the votes I hear so far, if I'm, if I'm not getting any more guidance, uh, I have to go with what I've gotten. So what I'll do is, uh, take, take this back to the subcommittee, which meets every two weeks. Is someone, someone got their hand up? No? Okay. I, I'll, I'll take this to subcommittee, which meets every two weeks. And, um, and try to draw, uh, CFO and superintendent into this, um, to get, um, something a little meatier and, and broader in scope, um, for a, a long-term, something we'll call long-term financial management policy. Okay. For this, in the six hun, in 6,000 series. And, uh, once we've got something new to present, I'll bring it back here and we'll hash it out. And, uh, you know, it's an iterative process. We'll see if we get closer to what we need. Okay? But we did promise to start the conversation in June and it's June's, only just barely. Okay. Uh, the next topic on our discussion table is there are two policies that, um, the administration and its work through the, um, through the, uh, special ed series has, uh, deemed to be redundant, especially since a host of new policies were passed in 2012. Um, now the major achievement program was sort of phased out a long time ago, uh, long after the federal dollars left. Um, and so the administration is recommending that we, uh, um, rescind this policy. And I just want to get some support from the, the board, uh, to, to move that recommendation out of committee so that we can formally vote on it, uh, in next month's meeting.
I'll move.
Uh, Bill is moving that we, uh, forward this recommendation out of committee to the full board. And Amy seconds discussion?
You know, I was, I was surprised to see that because it's so antique. My daughters were in the major achievement program when they, when they were in the city school district.
That's right. Well, many years, my kids were too. And many years ago, we, I had a principal who, who articulated a school philosophy that all children move in and out of giftedness. And that it's the obligation of the school to respond to that giftedness when it emerges. Not just because they scored high on ELA in math.
Right.
And, and that's really the sound of, of sound educational approach. So. But, um, anyone else want to weigh in on this one? If not, I'll call for a vote. Okay. The, the, the motion on the table is to, uh, advance the administration recommendation to rescind this policy. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Callie, are you getting everybody? Um, there's a few I didn't, uh, Ricardo, I didn't hear from you.
I don't know why. I definitely said aye.
Okay. And Beatrice is off. Beatrice, what's your vote?
Vote aye.
Thank you. Okay. Similarly, the, the compensatory education pop. This is the one that was really sort of superseded by host of new special ed regulations. And this is being recommended, recommended for, uh, recent, rescission. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion from Bill?
Second.
Second from, uh, President White. Discussion? Why is this being rescinded? May, maybe Steve can explain that the, uh.
It's very outdated. Um, the, the term even used in the title compensatory education. It, it's used in a general sense here. It's actually a very, uh, loaded term in special education, um, that's developed well past. This policy was put in place back in, I think, 1998, maybe something like that. And it was a carryover from an old policy even then. So it's just way past its time. We've had several people look at it and agree. Um, we have a lot of other policies that cover what this is trying to cover. Um, it's now been split up into, uh, much more differentiated, uh, more specific policies than this. It, it's time for it to go.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing no hands, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of accepting the administration's recommendation to rescind this policy? Say aye.
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 Thank you, Al. You'll see that. You'll see in upcoming, uh, board meetings. I don't, I, I, I'll have to have a conversation with Steve about, or we have to go through the three-step process because.
I was just going to say, I think that you, you just got a majority vote on your board to rescind a policy. I don't know why we would. We don't need first, second, third reading. There's nothing to change. It's going, right? I mean, I think they can both be considered rescinded as of this month. That's, that's my.
Well, I think we need a res. Well, uh, I'm gonna, I, I'm gonna trump you as the chair and say, we'll, we'll ask for a written resolution to be presented at our next business meeting. Do agree with you that, that there's no, for public input. Um, I, I don't, I, I don't think there is, you know, I don't, I can't imagine. If, if anything, if anyone did decide that, uh, they wanted it to stay, um, they could speak to us on the day that we, uh, are voting.
Yeah, that's fine. Well, I, I don't think we need to do second, third reading. No, I, I agree at least at that. So we'll see at the business meeting. We'll put in two resolutions to rescind separately.
Okay. All right. Uh, that takes us to our student attendance policy 5100. I think this is the one that Steve was referring to earlier about, uh, uh, there, there's a paragraph about distance learning that, um, needs to be updated. Um, you know, now that we have, are using, um, distance learning so aggressively, uh, in the, in the COVID world. This is the language that, uh, and I, you should have seen well before the meeting, but this is the language I'd like to insert into this policy. but this is the language I'd like to insert into this policy. Are there any questions about that? If not, and I don't see any hands, could I get a motion to have this policy approved by the committee and moved through the multi-step process?
Motion.
Second.
Move, Commissioner Malloy, seconded by President White. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. That'll take us through public readings at the board level. Finally, and I do mean finally, the code of conduct, which has been brewing and simmering and cooking for like two years now, is ready for, to be moved out of committee. We had the public hearing, was it just last week, Steve? I don't remember the dates.
Couple of weeks ago.
But we've held the public hearing that's required. We've heard all of our constituent groups and responded and reacted to them. And I would love to see this move out of committee. Do I have a motion?
Well, I think we just need to make sure that we're moving it out of committee with or without the two recommended changes. I don't know if we should have a discussion about, just a, you know, informal discussion about that at this point. To amend...
If I can have a motion, we can start discussing.
So move.
A motion from President White, a second by Commissioner Malloy.
Second.
I thought, I thought I heard you think. Okay. So, Steve, can you drive the conversation?
I can. After, after the last time we had a discussion about the code of conduct, which was about two months ago, in addition to the public comment session where the speakers came on, there were several focus groups with union members and staff where they were asked for their input. And that input was then consolidated into, you know, a series of charts. It was reviewed by cabinet members. And ultimately, we came to a recommendation of two particular items for changes. There was a lot, a lot of concern expressed about the notion of consensual sexual activity in the new code not having a suspension as an option. And some of the topics that really were prevalent were, you know, that in, for example, a K-8 school, it may not be unusual to see consensual sexual activity between eighth graders, but it could be in front of kindergartners. And, you know, and repeated violations of this really should be something that a short-term suspension is an option for. And upon discussion with the groups, that was advanced by the administration as one change to make, to add in a Level III short-term suspension option for consensual sexual activity for K through 12. And it does not mean that, you know, that the option is not there for lesser. In fact, it's, you know, that's what the whole matrix talks about, is starting with the lowest when you can and, you know, moving forward, but considering the age of the people engaged, the age of somebody who may have witnessed it, the number of times it's happened before, all the factors that we had asked them to consider and other, you know, other decisions, should, this should be at least an available option. So the superintendent on behalf of the administration is recommending that change. The second change has to do with classroom disruption. There was no change in the draft per se, but it did cause some concern. People were, I think there was some confusion as to how to view the matrix as a holistic document in which you look at multiple options for behaviors that you witness. And so we're just, I think the recommendation finally came down to put an asterisk in this one that if the classroom disruption involves behavior that is considered either harassing, threatening, or violent, then there are other code provisions, there's other matrix available to address that more significant behavior, including DASSA violations and DASSA reporting, you know, and threats and things like that. So we just wanted to put a reminder in there to help people who are navigating the matrix maybe for the first time or, you know, inexperienced in navigating it, that there are other things to look for. And I'll say that with this, after these code changes are presented in the codes of events, once the code passes, we will begin a series of trainings for people on the new code because it's a very big document and it can be, I think, difficult to navigate initially when you're trying to implement it from a disciplinary perspective. So with those two things, those are the two suggestions that the superintendent has advanced on behalf of the administration as amendments in committee so that if the code advances beyond here, that it would contain these two provisions is the request.
Understood, thank you. What are the, what are colleagues' questions on the code of conduct? And/or specifically the two points that Steve just raised? Keep in mind, there's still going to be several opportunities for community input as we go through first, second, and third readings. So if these prove to be entangling, we'll be able to react to them at the time. Any, I'm checking the hand for hands, I'm still not seeing any hands.
Commissioner Powell?
Yes.
I just wanted to add that I know this has been a long process, but it's been a good process. And I know that you've, as the board, you have worked to collect feedback from different constituents, both internally and externally. And again, I just want to reiterate the importance of, once this is approved, that we will work on training and applying, I believe, what is it, Steve? School Law 52.3, am I quoting that, or 52.6? That, as far as the implementation, because a code of conduct, again, is only as good as the training and the regular inconsistent application of that code. So that's really the next step of making sure that we get this approved so we can start implementing as of July 1st. So I just wanted to commend the board for their commitment to this. And we look forward to moving this forward from a restorative viewpoint. And I have to say, meeting with the principals, they are very much so about being restorative and just making sure that we have the support so we can do that. But this feels like a good move in the right direction. And then what we'll do is we'll get ourselves back on track and we'll make sure that we have this review done annually for a regular approval by July 1st of the next school year.
Thank you. And thank you to yourself and all of your people, from key cabinet people all the way down to folks that submitted suggestions. This has been a Herculean task. And I just, I just appreciate you all so much that we're finally here. I mean, you know, rewriting a code of conduct from a punitive standpoint to a restorative standpoint is like, you know, turning a battleship around in Black Creek or something. It's like a huge endeavor. So just thank you a lot. I'm checking for hands again. Bill?
Yes. I just wanted to indicate that I totally agree with what the superintendent just stated. Also, when I look at this, there's really only one change that we're proposing, and that's on the clarification point. But on point number one, when we go in for the three readings, do the, does the community get a copy of the clarification, the two clarification points that we're making prior to, you know, during the three readings? And they'll have a, so they'll know what was changed and have an opportunity to respond during the public session of the meeting?
Yeah. Prove those two changes, they would leave committee and we would add them into the current draft code. And that's what would be published for everybody to be looking at, so they're based on the same page. Yep.
Okay.
Excuse me, Commissioner Powell?
Yes, Rahima.
In addition, we still do have the Code of Conduct webpage that we created for the forum with the documents and Steve's PowerPoint that highlighted all the significant changes, Commissioner Clark. We could add the memo, which is currently in public view on Board Docs, to that page just for another way for the community to access that.
Oh, great, thanks.
Thank you very much, Rahima, for that suggestion. Okay. I'm looking for hands again. And I'm not seeing any. Does that mean it's time to call the question? All, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Of advancing this out of... Aye?
Aye.
Commissioner LeBron? Commissioner LeBron's off camera.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Well, those are all the policies that were, we were, oh wait, no, we got a whole nother set. Level, the third, Part III of the special ed policies. And that's going to be a presentation given by, who's presenting this packet? Rahima, is that...
I'm sorry, I muted. Yes, Commissioner Powell, I'm bringing it up. I'll be presenting in collaboration with the Sapphira Wade and Eugene McNamee as we did last month.
Hi, Eugene, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us. How's everyone this evening? Everybody's good? Okay. As we did last month, we'll go quickly. Go ahead, Rahima, you're on.
All right. So good evening, everyone, Commissioners, Super Administration, and Community. This is the final presentation on the special education part policies. So we'll just briefly go through this as we did last month. So just a quick reminder of where we are in the process and what the policy update roadmap looks like. We are currently in the last stage for this part of policies here at the, excuse me, the Committee of the Whole. They've already had feedback and recommendations from this list of contributors, which includes Administration, Board, and the Special Advisory Council, Parent Advisory Council. So I will turn it over to Eugene Yolanda to go into the details of which policy and its changes.
Thank you, Rahima. Okay. We started off with transfer students with disabilities, Policy 4216. And basically, the changes that we did to this were, we updated the language to align with the Commissioners' regulations and current SED, State of Ed, and federal guidance. Specifically, that was around our transfer students and collaborating with parents on writing temporary and permanent IEPs as they come into the district. Yolanda?
Yep. Okay. Good evening, everyone. With Policy Number 4217, which is regarding the identification and registration of children with disabilities, there we updated language again to align with Commissioners' regulations and current SED guidance to include consultation with private and parentally placed schools while maintaining updated records. Essentially, with this policy, this, it requires the district to maintain in its records and reports to the Commissioner on these matters in a manner prescribed by the Commissioner. And this is just with regards to the number of students enrolled in these schools.
Okay, thank you. Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, Policy 4218. There were no changes to this policy, so we had taken a look at everything that was there. I guess it was recently, had been looked at. But the only changes really were just basic formatting changes.
And on Policy 4219, concerning independent education evaluations, there was a recent Second Circuit case that came down that we updated this policy to align with. I would just say, Rahima, that in this, the case is the Trumbull case. So we just might want to change the spelling on that for the Trumbull decision. And we also aligned to Commissioners' regulations that are current. And we updated the due process provisions for parents. And again, we aligned this with a correlating proposed update to what's a superintendent's implementing regulation, 4219R. And while that particular 4219R wasn't on this slate, we did go ahead and make some proposed revisions to that implementing regulation so that it aligned squarely with 4219. And we also just, you know, updated some formatting.
4220, you also? No change. But you can do it. It's either one, if there were no changes to this one either.
With respect to impartial hearings, Jean?
No, 42, I'm sorry, you were just going to 4220. 4220 was special education mediation. There were no changes to that. 4221, the basic, the changes to that were, we updated the language to align with the Commissioners' regulations. We updated procedures for the service of, servicing of due process complaints. We specified who it needs to be delivered to, the address, et cetera. And for parties, what they needed to do in order to withdraw from a, do a withdrawal of an impartial hearing request as well.
And Jean, are you going to cover the next one?
Yes.
4222?
Yes, I will. 4222 is the adopted credential options for students with disabilities. We updated the language to align, they had made some changes over the years on the types of credentials, diplomas, that students could get and different pathways. So we updated the language to align with the Commissioners' regulations, specifically the graduation options, and again, the different pathways for students with disabilities.
And then, last but not least, with respect to 4240, the wandering and elopement policy. We went in our review, we noticed that while it discussed a behavior intervention plan to address elopement and wandering behavior, it did not cover the requirement for a functional behavior assessment that examines the function of the behavior so that an appropriate behavior intervention plan can be developed. So we updated that policy to ensure that a functional behavior assessment of the behavior is conducted and that it is addressed through the proper supervision as well as the behavior intervention plan. I think that does it.
That would be it.
Yeah. So the next steps is to have a motion to have this set of policies forwarded out of committee. And then it will follow the policy adoption process outlined in the 2410 Policy Management Policy concluded with a vote at the next business meeting, which will be June 24th.
Rahima, I just want to add that with respect to the Trumbull decision, we did go back and double-check to make sure that that case is not actually mentioned in the policy. We simply took what the case stood for to update the policy. It's just that in the PowerPoint presentation, we just want to change the spelling.
Now, I think the only way we're going to be able to have the June 24th is if we do the first and second readings at our next committee, a year before our next committee meetings as special meetings. But certainly, we can strive to have the vote on June 24th. Commissioner Aliyah, I see your hand.
Thank you. I'm sorry about that. I was talking and I was muted. This is more to the superintendent. When it was mentioned about the elopement policies, I am reviewing again the Trayvon Martin document. And I'm sure that that elopement policy also was in some way influenced by the Trayvon Martin case as well. So at some point, Madam Superintendent, I think we need to review where we are over at School 12 and the other processes as it relates to the Trayvon... the Trayvon Martin case. Have we placed into, have we implemented improved policies that something to the effect that happened with, with Trayvon is no longer possible to happen in our district that we have? Our system's in place, there's documentation being noted and what have you. So somewhere down the line, Madam Superintendent, I think we need to have a, the board needs to have an update of where we are in terms of systems and that we are assured that we're taking care of our specialty students.
Madam Superintendent, do you want to respond to that or does that stand on its own?
I, I can add something, you know, if it's helpful. So one of the things that the updated policy does is it distinguishes between wandering and elopement. Wandering being a behavior that is almost impulsive, where it's unintentional but a function of the disability. And elopement being an intentional, sort of an intent to flee the building that is sort of premeditated or planned or, and could possibly also be related to the disability. But I think that that was a very important first step in developing this policy and updating it to make that distinction. So that it really all sort of boils back down to the IEP, the specific disability. And the functional behavior assessment then is the tool that the school building and the CSC can use to determine why the behavior is occurring. What's the, the impetus for the behavior? And therefore, with doing that with the FBA, you can now analyze what an appropriate behavior intervention plan was. But I think that for that policy, that was a really important driving distinction is, is making that distinction between elopement and wandering. I think that will go a long way in helping buildings to build supports around any student that is either wandering or eloping.
Any other questions? Thank you, Yolanda, for that. I don't see any hands. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to answer these out of committee? Is that you, Bill? Commissioner Elliott?
Seconded.
Okay, Commissioner Elliott, seconded by Commissioner Malloy. Last call for discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
I know that President White had leave. I don't see Commissioner LeBron. Oh, there she is. Okay, so it carries six, six zero. Gene, Yolanda, to your team and, and to yourselves, thank you for your very hard work. You have set a standard for the rest of the administration to follow as we, as we march through our policy review. And it, very well done. Thank you so much. We're, we're making terrific headway on this agenda.
You're most welcome.
Thank you. You are welcome.
Thank you.
All right. The only thing I'd like to add to the policy committee agenda is this, that while we were having our earlier discussion about the bylaws of groups that, whose advice and counsel we take, whether it be Black or bilingual council or Student Leadership Congress, I noticed that policy 1900 alternately uses the generic term district-wide parent organization and the former phrase of parent advisory council. And so I think we're going to need to take that policy out of turn and, and bring it current, given that the parent advisory council has given itself a new name and new set of bylaws. So I will endeavor to do that between now and our next policy committee. Madam Superintendent, I see your hand is up.
Right. I didn't want to, I did not want to interrupt you, Commissioner Powell, but I just, back to the special education review. As you know, those policies, the, the regulations that come from the state are ever-changing. They can be very complex with multiple sets of expectations. And I just have to say, our team was incredible. And I've reviewed special education policies before and made modifications in both Ithaca and Brockport, but hands down, our team was phenomenal. And I think certainly having counsel particular that understands special education law is so powerful and so important. And as we continue to become much more compliant and work our way out of both a consent decree and Special Education Corrective Action Plan, we really have the right team, I believe, in place to do that. And I just wanted to echo my thanks and appreciation to the team.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you hear my request about a follow-up on Trayvon Martin?
Vice President Elliott, there was a little bit of an echo. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I had mentioned before, when Yolanda mentioned about elopement, that I wanted there to be a follow-up because I'm reviewing again the Trayvon Martin document from the state. Just to follow up to find out where we are with that. Have there been the recommendations that they made, are they in place? Not only at school 12, but just where we are with that. So somewhere down the line, I'd like to be able to have a conversation about that. Not anytime soon, first, you know, necessarily, but probably, you know, I think it is September, we need to review it.
Or prior to the start of the school year, maybe even. Okay. Sure. Callie, if you don't mind making a note, we'll make sure.
Well, that concludes the policy committee portion of tonight's meeting. And since President White is still has had to leave early, I'm going to hand the gavel to you, Commissioner Elliott, Vice President Elliott, to fit on our agenda.
I don't have an agenda before me, so Callie, if you can put it up and if there are other items that we need to discuss for the evening. Or if not.
There is just executive session for this evening.
I don't think we need that anymore.
Okay. All right. Well, then that, that is actually it. Then Vice President Elliott, that is the agenda.
Motion to adjourn?
A move.
Second?
What, are you going to do your survey, guys?
Call.
Yeah, we'll do the survey.
Commissioner Adams, did you say something? I'm sorry.
I think he said second.
Oh, okay.
So do we have all of the?
Still, still waiting on, on, on a few more?
Okay.
President White was trying to join the meeting, but I don't think he's connecting.
Would he miss out on filling out the survey? Since it was launched when, before he got here?
I, he would be able to see, he would be able to see it when he comes in, but he's not, he's not quite in the room for some reason. It's just pending. So without him, we are complete.
So all those in favor in adjourned in the meeting?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Good night, everybody.
Night.